I call the Board of Aldermen meeting to order for the City of Warrenton for September 2nd, 2014. We usually start our meetings off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask Marine Corps Commandant Bill Stravant to lead us in the pledge.
All right. Those in here, for a man salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready, two.
Thank you, Bill. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes, regular board meeting minutes from August 19th, 2014.
I make a motion we approve the minutes of August 19th, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Dryer, to approve the regular board meeting minutes from August 19th, 2014. Any discussion, corrections, or additions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alda Person Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six, zero. Item 3B, executive session meeting minutes from August 19th, 2014. Any changes or corrections?
I make a motion that we approve the executive session minute, meeting minutes from August 19th.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Hawley, seconded by Alderman Clark, to approve the executive session meeting minutes from August 19th, 2014. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alda Person Kesslerly?
I stand that was absent.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to see if we can make the executive session minutes for the meeting of August 19th as part of the public record as, as opposed to keeping them as executive. I think that one of the topics discussed there, I have a real question whether it should have been an executive in the first place, and I think because of the nature of it, it needs to be where the public has access to that portion of the minutes.
I, I think we were well within our rights to have that, you know, on an executive session. If the board decides they want to make those minutes public, I certainly would not object to it, so.
Well, my comment is, I mean, if you read through the statute of what's eligible for executive session, I don't see how the personnel section of that qualified regard, and aside from the fact that nothing has to be in executive session, there is no legal requirement that anything be in executive session at all.
That's true.
Aside from that, I would like to make a motion that we would make the executive session minutes available to the public.
I'll second the motion.
Pardon me?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion on the floor by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schluter, to make the executive session meeting minutes from August 19th, 2014, a matter of public record and open to the public. Any discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alda Person Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Motion carried six, zero. We'll consider it done. Item 3C, special tax rate meeting minutes from August 26th, 2014.
Make a motion that we approve the tax rate minute hearing from August 26th, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Kesslerly to make the, or to approve the special tax rate meeting minutes from August 26th, 2014. Roll call, please.
Alda Person Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Abstained, I was absent.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Abstained and was absent as well.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two abstentions. Item four, hearing from the public. Each meeting, we give the people and the audience an opportunity to address the board. If anybody would like to address the board, we ask that you come forward at this time. Come to the podium, give us your name, and we allow five minutes to address the board. So, if anybody would like to do that, please do so at this time. Nobody likes you up. Don't want to talk. Okay, not hearing from the public, we're going to move on, and we'll, we'll extend that same courtesy to the Board of Aldermen. If any of the board, board members would like to make comments or address the public, let's start off with Alderman Clark, since he's the president of the board.
I have nothing.
Nothing? Alderman Ock?
Yeah, I just have one thing. I think sometimes we in the public tend to be very critical of the city, particularly the city staff, and it's almost like it's sometimes open games for that. And I just wanted to share with the letter that we received from one of the businesses of Warrenton, which I think reflects what we're trying to do as a city in terms of services to, to individuals and to businesses. And this is addressed August 13th, 2014, to the City Council, the Tourism Commission, and Melanie Rue, if I pronounce it right. I'm not a great name pronouncer. Basically, once again, Lee and myself have liked to express our sincere thanks and gratitude for the $600 that was awarded to the China House buffet for the MoDOT attraction sign at the Warrenton Aces. Melanie Rue has again been extremely helpful this year as in years past during our application for these funds. Melanie is a prime example of how easy it is to work with the City of Warrenton as a small business owner. So, I think we need to recognize, we do have employees, and the city strives to work with small businesses, because often we get the ones come down complaining about things that aren't right, things we need to look at and address. But I think we also need to recognize that there are people who, who do realize the city's making a good effort, and in this case, she particularly. That's all.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Ock. You know, you stole Alderman Hawley's thunder, she was going to read that same letter.
Sorry, I can't agree with it.
Well, you can read it again.
Read it again. No.
My turn?
Your turn, Alderman Kessler.
Yeah, I got a couple things. I was treating myself to a wonderful pedicure about a week and a half ago, and I was sitting next to two wonderful people who just happened to be in town for a softball tournament. And I thought, thank goodness, we got more business, people do more than just eat, they're actually doing things in town. So, I was pleased to see that, and wonderful comments from them as far as how the facility was ran. I was asking all the strategic questions to see if I could get a complaint, and I did not, so that was a very nice feedback. Then last weekend, I felt like I'm a full-time city employee fielding questions about the pool. And so, we obviously have some issues at the pool, which I know we're going to address coming up soon. I hope this last weekend, I got absolutely no calls, so I'm hoping some of the things that were done over the, the week fix those problems. So, that being said, and the other item that took up quite a bit of time last weekend was grass. And before I could even let Terry know of the grass cutting complaint, the city had already cut the grass without anybody saying anything, so that was great, so. I'm hoping grass season is almost over.
I doubt it.
And we'll move into leaf burning season.
Three inches of rain last night. We're going to be cutting. Is that it?
Yep.
I don't have anything.
I have nothing as well.
Alderman Dryer?
None.
I, I just have one topic here, real briefly, and it's for the Board of Aldermen. Our next meeting scheduled for September 16th. And originally, we, we invited the Board of Aldermen to attend the Missouri Municipal League Convention in St. Charles. And as of right now, I think maybe Melody and I are probably the only two going, and maybe, maybe some other departmental staff. But from the board, I just want to poll the board. If, if, if the board's going to be all intact, we will leave our meeting on that same scheduled date. If, if some of the board's going to attend, we might have to look at rescheduling, so. Alderman Clark, are you good for that date?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
I'll be here.
Alderman Kessler?
I will not be here.
I will be here.
I will be here.
I have no idea.
No idea. What does, what, one, two? You weren't, Will?
Yes.
Three? Okay. We, we'll leave that as a scheduled meeting, and, and Alderman Clark can do my job for me.
We'll have it out a lot faster.
You'd be done a lot faster.
And he's going to bring food. I'm shooting for Fred's record.
And you're bringing food, right?
We'll see about that. I'll be able to check up on you. Item seven, introduction to new employees. I have administrative assistant and special events. Terry, you want to do the pleasure?
Sure, Jessica, if you would please. This is Jessica Black. She is our new administrative assistant, who's going to take care of our special events. Jessica started on the 27th of August and hit the ground running, and we're very happy to have her with us. This is the mayor and Board of Aldermen, Jessica.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Chief Howdes Shaw, you want to do an introduction for us?
It's my pleasure to introduce Corey Mills, our new police officer. As you recall, he spent two days on the road before he got called up?
Yeah.
Yeah. Two days on the road in field training, and then got called up for Ferguson and the National Guard, but now he's back and getting at it.
Good. Welcome aboard, Corey.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Mr. Gevers, Board of New Persons?
James Hafford, meter reader. He was summer help and got hired on his full-time.
Welcome aboard, James. Glad to have you. Item eight on, on the agenda is kind of a touchy subject. It's, it's a resignation of Alderman Dryer. And, and I think the public, we need to do an explanation of kind of what, what went on, and why have we got this on the agenda. A few weeks ago, we had a special session, and, and maybe tempers and emotions were a little higher than what they should have been, or what we like for them to be. And I think sometimes we say things when, when we're emotional that maybe a couple days later, we regret seeing. The, the issue is that Alderman Dryer made a comment in, while the board was in session, that he was resigning. Our city clerk was present, and, and she was recording the session and so forth. When that happens, legally, and I'm, I'm, I think I'm, if I'm telling them wrong, Counselor Gervell, you correct me, legally, we have to bring that motion to the floor to see whether this board wants to accept that resignation or, or reject it. A yes, yes vote from the board means that the resignation stands, Alderman Dryer will be dismissed from the board, I'll go on a search to find a replacement for him, you know, from someone in Ward 3. A no vote means they're rejecting the resignation request, and he'll remain on the board. Did I explain that clear to everybody's on board? So, at this time, I'll open this up for discussion from the board and entertain any comments.
I, I think the public needs to be aware that we did receive a letter, or addressed to Brandy from Alderman Dryer, saying that he would like to withdraw, I will withdraw my resignation from the Board of Aldermen, it was not my intent to do that in an executive meeting the other night. So, public needs to be aware of that also, that we have that document.
Good point.
But the discussion point circled around the application to work for the city and hold the alderperson position. And I was not at the executive meeting due to illness, but my opinion is one cannot hold a public job like ours and have a position with the city. It's a conflict of interest, in my opinion. However, I think also, in addition to what the public needs to know, is that we also have a letter to Brandy withdrawing application for the job from Jim Dryer. So, to me, that kind of clears up the situation. I see no reason for Jim to not be retained on the board. I just feel like he could not provide proper ethical decision-making being on the board and a city employee.
Yeah, I, I would agree with Karen, but I really think as a board, if our standard's greater than what the ethical board is, I, I believe we should put a motion in place that it'll be illegal in the City of Warrenton for an elected official to apply for a job in the City of Warrenton until they are no longer an elected official. I think that would be a standard greater than what the Ethics Committee requires of us, and we certainly are entitled to do it, and it would certainly save us from getting in situations like that in the future, so.
I'm backing Gary completely on that.
Okay. Alderman Schluter?
I, full-heartedly agree with, with what Bill needs to propose for that.
Alderman Dryer, any comments? Alderman Clark?
I, I agree that what Karen said to a certain degree, he was, Alderman Dryer was willing to step down if he was to be considered as a, as a position in the city. I don't remember what, exactly what the position was. But he did, if he wasn't going to be considered, he didn't want to step down. And there's a little bit of difference there, I think, in what we're seeing, but I agree with Alderman Ock that we probably need to set some bigger standards and possibly like a year out of office before you would be considered to be an employee of the city.
I wouldn't go that far. I just think if you're not a city employee, then, I mean, if you're not a sitting official, you can be an employee of the city. I don't think there's any reason not to do it within a year. I see no reason for that. It's just there's a conflict of being, you know, at the same time doing the job.
But a part of this is perception, too. I mean, it would look pretty suspicious if, if, if an Alderman applied for a job the day after he left office, and then two weeks later, the city hired him. That would certainly raise some question in the public's mind. So, maybe a year is too long, but I think there should be some time period before that.
In researching, some cities do six-month standard, too.
Six-month standard? And of course, and the other question is, is, is when a person applies for a job, are there legal issues over and above that would stop us from putting a timeframe on it?
The, you're talking about some type of discriminatory act?
Right.
Where the city could be accused, obviously, anybody can accuse the city of anything.
Right.
But you take that outlier out. What, the constitutional analysis on discrimination is based solely on the idea of, is there a neutral reason for the determination? And I think, you know, that clearly avoiding an appearance of impropriety or appearance of conflict of interest would be okay. And I also want to take one of the things, as I researched the issue, because there's not really a lot of law, and there's not a lot of municipal government attorneys that have ever experienced kind of what happened. It was kind of an anomaly. You know, I talked to Terry a little bit today about even bringing some more suggested things, because it's very slim, you know, as you said, Alderman Ock, with regards to ethical conflict of interest or ethical determinations of when an Alderman can and can't vote. And they kind of leave that city to create your own kind of code for how you want to do it. For example, a, a personal vote, you know, if it's not tied to a financial, special financial interest gained by that person voting, then they're not excluded under law from voting. So, I, I just wanted to bring that up, because I think it's actually kind of an opportunity to look at that and say, you could even expand on some additional issues. But getting back to your question, Alderman Ock, I don't think there would be any issue whatsoever if you had it, because we basically track the language of the statute and put our own timeframe in there. And the state says a year where you attempt to influence the board, you cannot hold that position, or you cannot attempt to influence the board. And the case law definitely allows to set forth their own regulations for that.
Well, I see that we have two things right now facing, facing us. One is whether or not to accept the resignation of Jim Dryer as alderperson. That's the first issue. And I'm trying to-
Let's do the hell you phrase it.
Well, we've got a negative negative here, so.
You could just, there was a, you could accept his withdrawal of his resignation. That could be the motion.
Right.
And, or if you accept the withdrawal of his resignation, you vote yes, and that would-
Okay. I'll make the motion that we accept the withdrawal of Jim Dryer's resignation from the Board of Aldermen.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Alderman Kesslerly, seconded by Alderman Hawley to, what was your turn? With, approved the-
Accept the withdrawal of the resignation.
Accept the withdrawal of the resignation of Alderman Dryer. Alderman Dryer will not be able to vote on this, so we have five votes.
Can I make one comment before I vote? I think in fairness to Alderman Dryer and the public, Alderman Dryer did contact the Ethics, the Missouri Ethics Commission, and they didn't feel like there was a conflict. So, from his perspective, he had a different view of it based on his phone call, but I think the board was holding it to a higher standard, or a different standard. So, I think he needs to be at least recognized that, that he didn't make that phone call.
Any other comments or questions? Everybody understands the, the motion? Roll call, please. Melody?
Alderman Ock?
No.
Alderman Clark?
No. That's why I want to make sure you know what you're voting.
Well, I, well, no, we're not going to accept the recommendation.
No. A yes vote says you agree that he's withdrawing his resignation.
Repeat it. Repeat it.
To accept his withdrawal of resignation, so it would be a positive vote. Withdraw-
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to accept his withdrawal of the resignation, because I want him to continue serving, so I'm going to vote, we're not, I'm not going to-
No, no, you got it backwards.
He's withdrawing his resignation.
His letter requesting withdraw his resignation, to accept that.
How about a yes meet, he stays on the board?
Oh, okay. You want him to continue being Alderman, vote yes. Okay.
You rattled me there, you convinced me.
Well, I just thought we were, I thought we were voting on his initial letter, not the withdrawal letter.
I think, yeah.
So, when it was explained the first time, it was like, you're voting on the withdrawal letter. Well, no, I'm not going to accept the withdrawal letter.
So, yes, as he stays on the board.
I explained it just in reverse of that.
Well.
So, I can see where you'd be confused.
I'm easily confused.
But Counselor Gervell's right, it should be a pos, positive motion.
All right. A positive vote.
All right. Start over again.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alda Person Kesslerly?
Yes.
Motion carried five, zero.
Welcome aboard, Jim.
Thanks.
The mayor next meeting will tell you what committees you're on.
Mayor's not going to be here. I got item nine, discussion of proposed ordinance regarding seated elected officials, and this is what Alderman Ock was just alluding to. We, we kind of took it upon ourselves that we need to start thinking about what we want to do there, so.
But we don't have anything written up yet.
No. We, we're going to track this, we've already looked at it. We looked at it before last meeting, what we would draft up and how we'd put it in there. It's just really, do you guys want to have a time limitation afterwards? Is six months what you want? Because remember, you could pass it, and it can always change, but at least there's a standard set there.
If, if we put a time on it, and it's in conflict with state statute, then, then we'd waste our time there.
No, the courts have said, a city can put more constraint on their own ordinances on how alderper, people can vote, or how they can serve after they leave office. That, that is absolutely allowable. In fact, as Alderman Schluter said, there's a lot of cities that have those regulations in place. We have a pretty bare-bones ethics, you know, ordinance that we have. That's pretty standard for most cities of our size, but I think we would be more than allowable to put that type of restriction in place.
Well, I guess what the mayor's saying is the state has a year?
State has a year.
So, can we go more lenient than the state?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah. You could do six months.
Depending on what position is it, that we're talking about, though. I mean, and I might use Terry as an example, that, that maybe Terry wanted to, to take a higher position, you know, now, that's not a good example. You know, kind of the top of the chain. Yeah.
Well, Jim wants to do Terry's job.
Can I interrupt just for a minute?
Okay.
Clarification on that is actually, the statute reads that you can be hired, you just can't make any decisions concerning the city within a year.
You can't attempt to influence the board.
You can't influence any type of work.
Attempt to influence.
Hiring is fine, it's just that you can't help influence any decisions.
But that gets, it's virtually impossible to try to define, and like I said, I've debated this issue since last meeting with city attorneys till I was blue in the face. We could make it, Alderman Schluter, what I, what I would suggest we do is just say, very cut and dry, you cannot be hired by the city either, and I think the options are either while you're serving on the board, you can't hold both positions, a period of time afterwards, or we just track the statute and eliminate the point you made, Eric, about the attempt to influence language, is just take it out and say, a year after. I think it's kind of your decision.
And I, and I don't want to make it a total argument here, but it is very clear-cut that you cannot hold a position and be on the board at the same time. That needs to be specified, because I called the AG's office as well as the Ethics Commission, and it is stated right in their literature up front, a mayor cannot hold a position within the city and be a mayor, nor can a county personnel hold a commissioner job or a-
But you can't hold-
That position and be a county employee as well.
Well, there are two separate questions, because I spoke with the Ethics Commission, so I know Alderman Dryer spoke with the Ethics Commission, that there was no, that position specifically was not an ethical violation. There's actually very little restrictions, except for positions that are supervisory over other ones, but that's not considered that according to the Ethics Commission. I think we can be very specific about it, but, you know, there's even an ethics written opinion on it, Alderman Schluter, that states specific-
Several opinions.
Yeah, but it states that, you know, the attempt to influence, because that section of the Ethics Code is the only section related to it. And that particular section, there's people that, there's people that have been hired where they haven't quote-unquote "attempted" to influence the board's decision-making authority in that one-year period. It, it's just very general language. So, I, I think Alderman Dryer, I mean, Alderman Dryer, you contacted the Ethics Commission, got the same opinion, right? So, I think, you know-
But, but, I'm going to interrupt you, because what bothers me is I contacted Stacy, who's head of the commission, and stated that she believed full-heartedly if he had a position and held an Alderman position, it would be a violation.
Of the Ethics?
Yes. Very clear-cut.
Well, it differs from what their written opinions are, and what they told me and what they told Alderman Dryer, but regardless-
But if ours is going to be, you can't do both, then it's not an issue.
That would play the ordinance, because it would clarify.
Let's make our ordinance that you can't.
And, and I would like to see in there, because right now, we're saying you can't hold a job. I don't want to be put in the city's position of hiring somebody. The whole application process should be considered, not just hiring.
Well, we're talking about ineligible for employment, so I think that would probably cover it.
Okay.
I like the six-month timeframe.
I do, too.
All right, we can leave that.
Excuse me.
Is there something you want to think about?
No.
Come back?
No, let's act on it. We just got to figure out how to-
Alderman Clark, or you got a timeframe that you're interested in?
I could go with the six months. I, I thought the year was to meet the state statute, but whatever, whatever works out. I think as long as there's a period between.
Okay, let me, let me attempt any motion. Make a motion that we direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance that would prohibit an elected official from holding a city position for a period of six months after they have left office.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Hawley, to have the city attorney draft the proposed ordinance regarding seated elected officials, that they cannot apply for employment with, for a timeframe of six months or less after they leave employment. That sound what you had in mind?
Sounds good to me.
Roll call.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kessler?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero. Item ten, Director of Operations, Terry Thorne.
My first item for you this evening is the results of the Tourism Commission that met on August 26th. There were three items that they considered. There was a request from the farmer's market for $33 as a reimbursement for newspaper advertising, for their customer appreciation day. There was a request from Dairy Queen for $600. This was reimbursement for their interstate attraction sign. Both these items were budgeted items and were recommended for approval, for a total of $633. There was also a request for the group who's putting together the tribute for the, to veterans, on Veterans Memorial, for the, I can't say it, Tribute to Veterans Memorial. Request came in for $2,000. The Tourism Commission recommended increasing that amount to $10,000. This was not a budgeted item, but they discussed taking it from the contingency funds that are available within their budget.
I was able to sit in on that meeting and, and I, I thought the Tourism Committee was very passionate. Well, first of all, let me back up. I, I don't think the committee asked for $2,000. Am I correct on that, Melody? Was, was the request?
They didn't have a dollar figure.
Pardon me?
They did not have a dollar figure on the request.
So, we just kind of plugged in that $2,000 as a starting point.
That came off the policy.
Off of what?
The policy, the tourism reimbursement policy.
Okay.
That's where we got the $2,000 from.
So, so during their discussion, and one of the items they talked about was spending $10,000 to the fair board for the fireworks display. And, and they were trying to justify how much tourism that brought into the community. $10,000 lasted about 35 minutes and went up in smoke. And, and they thought, comparing these two, this was a much more long-lasting, forever-type monument to the veterans of our county that gave their lives in battle. They talked about who it might bring to the city. And, and I, and I might have Rick or Bill or somebody address this, but they talked about having a time capsule there. And what's the computerized deal that, that they bury in parks and where people run all over the country?
Geocaching.
What do they call it?
Geocaching.
Okay, geocaching. Talked about having that there. And, and the Tourism Board, I think, was pretty passionate. They thought it would bring a lot of tourism to the community. So, if anybody on the veterans wants to comment to the board that, that was maybe more involved in that meeting than me, we would entertain you at this time. Tom, would you like to say anything, or? Am I, am I off the path there, or what went on?
Not at all. Should I take you up this way?
Sure, would you please?
I thank you for the opportunity to just to board of Alderman. When we went before the Board of Tourism, we tried to present our, our argument for the attraction that this site would be for the community as a whole. There are tourists who will go out of their way to visit memorial sites just for the educational aspect of it and a comparison type of thing, where they may have been in other communities and, and appreciated what they did. I think that is one aspect of what we're trying to present to the county. But we also feel like it would be a tremendous enhancement as people come into the county through Highway 47. It is an image that will really grasp anyone coming up that highway and seeing the image of that memorial site right there. It will be very spectacular. And I think word of mouth is, is going to spread pretty quickly. We also have a website that will be presented on, you know, worldwide, nationally. And I think that could draw people into the area as well. There, there could be one of the other members that could add a little more to the comments here. But I do feel like it would be a tremendous enhancement to the community. And I do, do feel like many families and many tourists would be attracted to this. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Tom. One of the things, and I don't know if we've shared this with, with your membership or not, but as a city, and using taxpayers' dollars, we're, we're kind of restricted sometimes on what we can do with those dollars. One of the things we can't do is make donations. We could make a payment toward concrete, toward bronze statues, maybe toward engineering, that type thing. But, but just to give you a, a cash donation, that would, we would be prohibited in doing that. So, I just want to make sure we understood that. Here's the chairman of the Tourism Committee. And I didn't see you sitting back there, I would have called on you earlier, Mr. Shell Harvey.
Well, I saw Alderman Ock looking around the corner at me, so I thought I'd better make myself known.
We would have called you out anyway.
What's that?
We would have called you out anyway.
Yes, Rick and Tom and their group made a very good presentation to our commission meeting. And to, to again, back up to what the mayor said, we are basically an advisory committee. We try to, the, the tourism dollars come in and they're tax dollars paid to, through a hotel tax that was put in years ago. And the idea is to spend it hopefully to bring tourism dollars to town, either through people coming to town for an event, eating, staying in hotels, et cetera. So, that's one of the things that, when they presented this to us, and, and they did, they came before us with a $2,000 request. That's our policy, bottom line policy, basically, for an event, a multi-day event, which kind of fit their thing. My point was, when they came and asked for $2,000, I said, well, how come it wasn't more? Well, because again, we looked at this, that we did $10,000 to the fair board for a fireworks display that lasted about 20 minutes, 25 minutes, whatever it was. Here is an opportunity, we thought, and that's not taking anything away from what we did for the fair board, what we did for the fair. I think the city, the citizens of the city wanted to see a fireworks display, which they hadn't seen years, years before. The city stepped up and did that. And to back up, you know, I talked to some of the surrounding cities. Troy, for instance, their Tourism Commission, they do $10,000 with the Lincoln County Fair for Saturday night's music entertainment, which maybe lasts two hours. It's a little longer than a fireworks display, but they do work with the fair board. They figure it's a very important part of bringing tourism to the, some tourism dollars into town. After hearing what the Veterans Committee wants to do for this thing, it's a, it's a beautiful, going to be a beautiful thing. Ride along 47, high visibility. Warrington is along the Purple Heart Trail, which I think Tom mentioned it. That's one of the things, you know, that people do travel the Purple Heart Trail, and they visit these memorials along the way. I was talking to a person from Texas and said, they've got, they've got some huge ones down in Texas. Of course, everything's bigger in Texas, but they have the same thing down there. They have a bunch of memorials, same kind of trail. And they said they're, they're very, very well-traveled, very well-visited. I think when the bottom line came down to, and I know the mayor was there, and, and my point was, this is something that's going to be in the city of Warrington. I feel like the city of Warrington should take the lead in this. You know, it's great to hear that, you know, someone says they're going to give $1,000 here or $5,000 here. I think it's an opportunity for the city to step forward, take a lead. And I ask them, you know, is there something, what can we do to help get this moving, moving forward? Because once dirt is being moved and people actually see something happening there, I think there'll be more from the businesses and people will get involved in it and, and start contributing more. Rick or Tom, one, I forget who it was, mentioned that, hey, right now, you know, $10,000 would be a big help. That would take care of the architecture, or the architect's work. So, basically what it came down to, we, we said, well, we'd like to propose donating $10,000 for the architect. Let's get this moving forward. And that's the, that's kind of how it came about. And I would like to say that I've worked with these people on the Tourism Commission for several years now. I don't know how many years really, but, but we've had some, you know, great people. We've, and we're trying to bring some things. Terry mentioned in one of the meetings, she thinks we need to do something to make Warrington a destination. I think this maybe fits in that mold. You know, we're also looking into, there's a little town in Guthrie. Tammy Miller is from Iowa, and she discovered this little town in Iowa, 1,500 people. They have an event there that started out with 2,500 people, it's grown to 20,000 plus. It's an event, and that, that's the things we're trying to look at, to bring, bring tourism, bring something to the city. We are, it seems like the city's kind of in malaise right now. We just, there's nothing happening and we can't get anything going. And, and, you know, we're all passionate about it. We get Tammy Miller, Janet Pollidge, Rodney, he's with the hotel out there, so he's definitely got an interest in it, you know? And we're, so we're trying to, you know, to move forward with this stuff. This is one of the things I think would be a great, great, a big step forward to doing this. And, you know, so that's, that's the thinking behind it. And, you know, if you've got any questions on it, I'd.
Well, I kind of, I hate bringing up the discussion of the fireworks and the discussion of paying for architects. Because if we say, we're going to do this instead of fireworks, there will be, you know what to pay. Because when the city did not support the fireworks, and there weren't any fireworks, it was a really ugly time in the city. So, you know, I'd hate even mentioning the two in the same discussion, because I don't, I don't think it's one of those either-or things.
No, it's not, it's not an either-or, no, I don't think.
But that's kind of how that discussion sounded. So, in the, in the tourism budget and in your planning, is there still money for the fireworks display?
Yes, there is. We, we've discussed that. In fact, we're, we're having a, I have requested that we have a meeting in September, even though we don't have anything else to discuss. And that's one of the things I think we're, we need to look, look, look at. Because if it's not done now, we risk losing an opportunity to even hire a fireworks display company. Now, I know, I think the mayor made the comment at the meeting too, that, you know, maybe we don't want to be in the fireworks display business, but.
It does bring a lot of people.
In all reality, you know, all the towns around us, Wright City, Jonesburg, they all have fireworks displays. So, it's, it's, it's something we need to definitely look at.
Well, I think.
But yeah, the money, but to answer your question, yes, the money is there.
Okay, and I think that's the important thing, you know, we're on tape, and I'm always amazed at the number of people who watch this tomorrow, which is kind of scary to me. But, I mean, just to make sure that the facts of, you know, what is in the tourism budget, you know, how much money is in the contingency fund, that, that's there.
Well, I don't want to tell you, because I don't want you, I don't want you all spending it yet.
No, no, but I think, I think making, making the statement that there's more than adequate money in the tourism fund, is that, would that be a generous statement?
Yes, because, and we're not looking just at fireworks. We've, we've talked about, because of the German background in the Schollinger House, we've talked about doing a Fall Fest, Wine Fest type thing. We've, we've discussed doing a Brew Fest. These are all things we're looking at. And like I say, this thing Tammy Miller brought up, I hope to talk to the individual prior to our September meeting and find out exactly how he got it started. Because suppose he was like one guy in this little town, works at a dairy farm, and he's decided they needed to have a, a function there, and it started out a little bitty thing. You know, we're trying to do things.
So you could be our one guy.
You need a younger, more energy.
So, we can't make any donations, so this, this is not a donation whatsoever to this project. I mean, I personally really want this project to get done too. We just have to be very careful on how we're funding and what we're funding, and if we do a specific, a specific project piece of it.
Well, I don't know if donation is the proper term for it.
No, it is, it's not, we cannot make a donation.
Because it's like, when I spoke to the people at Troy, when they do, basically, they, they say, okay, Lincoln County Fair, here's $10,000, it's earmarked for Saturday night entertainment. And she said, the way that got started was, it got them, at least it got the Lincoln County Fair, okay, instead of hiring somebody at this level of entertainment, now they can hire somebody at this level.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't know what the proper.
In this case, if it was something that we would say, but correct me if I'm wrong, we would say, out of our tourism budget, we would elect to support the architectural development. Is that something?
Could we ask the city attorney to give us some definition as to what the city can or can't do? Because I think we all agree quite clearly, we can't make a cash donation to the organization. So what are the parameters that are our options?
Okay, I, I think number one, when you look at the statute on the tourism money, it says to promote tourism. So I think it is probably, you have to assume the state legislature was intentionally somewhat ambushed in what is promoting tourism. I think it's what you guys decide it's going to be and what it is. I think, you know, the, the things that I get a little bit concerned about is how you guys have defined it in the past, and really not the fact that you're held to any precedent, but, you know, would somebody then come back and ask for a similar type donation for something in an architectural phase, as opposed to kind of a bricks and mortar phase, where their project is actually being built and it's something that has a somewhat immediate return? Because, you know, we architected for a recreational center, it was never built. So what was the tourist attraction that occurred? So that does concern me a little bit there. The way the mechanism sets up is that it is a symbiotic relationship with the Tourism Board, where basically through your budgetary powers, you control how that money's spent. This is something that's outside of a budget, but obviously, that budget can be amended out of the contingency fund, as Mike said, with regards to, you know, spending that additional money. But I do have some concerns about earmarking it for architectural drawings when you're talking, I think last time you guys were here, you estimated it was $250,000 you were trying to raise. That could be seven years off. I know that's not the goal, but realistically speaking, you have something budgeted in this year for an item that's going to be a tourist attraction seven years from now. And what does that create, you know, with regards to, you know, precedential requests? With regards to, hey, we, we have this plan, we want to do this down the road, how can we do it? I think, you know, and then you have a year-to-year budget system as well, where, you know, are you going to earmark this in the budget every year until they get the architecture or how they do it? So I think, as much as the idea is a great idea, logistically, I think there's some issues with regards to how you allocate it, when you allocate it, and what it goes to.
Well, it's a, it's a three-phase, and I don't know if you've heard the whole thing. It's a three-phase project. So, you know, I don't know, to address what Chris is getting at, you know, I don't know whether.
Before you started talking, I was sitting here thinking, well, first of all, I wasn't real excited that this is a tourist project, but I think you've made a reasonable case that it could be considered that. And, but I, before you made your comments, I was a little concerned about us putting $10,000 up in front on a project that could take some period of time if it all happened, and we certainly hope it happens. I would be more inclined to say, when you get to the brown gate breaking stage, if the city crew went out there and helped dig the hole, or helped do this, and we did it through in-kind services, I'd be, wouldn't have any issue with that at all. But I think there is a legitimate point. You'd like to see them farther down the road. I mean, $10,000 on a 200-plus-thousand project, you'd like to see their fundraising raising that, and then as we move forward. So I'd have no problem if we were going to do in-kind services for 10 grand or even a little bit more in the future, when, when there's something we could do within our resources.
I mean, the other thing is too, is, you know, I don't know what the intention is for the immediate recovery of this $10,000, because originally it was two, it's 10. You know, it's in the fundraising stages. You could even do a budget to include it in there, an amount, for something as well, just thinking outside the box, that you could do, that, you know, just putting it in a budgetary thing, you know, format, so it's part of the budget from year to year, that you know that you have this allocation year to year to see if you can fund it, you can budget it, is another way to look at it. That it's like, hey, we want to give this money, but it's kind of, what's the trigger point? Or where, where would this money come in? Some type of, you know, it sounds like the intent is wanting to do that, but some type of trigger as far as, do you get to bricks and mortar, to where they can collect that $10,000, or be reimbursed that $10,000, or get in-kind services for the $10,000, or maybe even more in in-kind services?
What about a letter of intent from the board saying their intent is that, that we're going to support this group for $10,000, and maybe specify what that money is used for at that time? Maybe it's the bronze statues, or maybe it's the stone that goes in the backdrop, or the, or the nameplates? Something like that. At least that would get them off that center, that they know they've got this, this money coming. It's just a matter of what it, what it gets appropriated.
I think you have recognized, that letter could be drawn by the next board.
Well, it'd be, it would be year to year, but it would be. Well, it'd be, it would be year to year, but it would be something that would have, you know, they could come in and request it to be renewed, you know? And I think the other thing is, it goes back as well, to your point, Mayor Dyer, is if tourism met at the next meeting, they budgeted the $10,000 for tourism for their project, or the city, you know, there's some type of, you know, in-kind or whatnot, with at least a trigger, I think the tourism board can absolutely issue a letter at that point to say, hey, this is what we're gonna do. And then as it's taken up in the next budget, they can, you know, re-budget that amount, or make that decision, reissue the letter as well. But I think Alderman Ock does, you know, his point is correct, it's only gonna be good for that year, you know? So if they don't get it done within a year, it would have to be renewed, but I can't see the tourism board, you know, you know, thankfully, we've had a very consistent board over the last couple of years, we've had a lot of stability, that hopefully that's not gonna change, or that their opinion might not change. Only thing that may change is the funding of that donation request. So I think you could kinda do a combination of the two, to say, "We want to give you this amount for something in the future, whether it's the bronze statue, or it's, you know, the earth moving, or as in-kind services, we're gonna budget the amount." Because you could even do in-kind and have tourism repay city staff for it, Alderman Ock. I mean, there's a million ways you could do that.
Another thought, real quick, and then I'll move on. The other thing I think, maybe we should try to use this as a leveraging advantage. I mean, I kinda get the impression the city's willing to do something, but if we could use that as a tool to try to get others to participate, so if you go and say, "Well, the city's willing to do 10,000 in value toward this project, what's the county willing to do? What's some of the local businesses willing to do?" So, to lay that out as a challenge grant to those other organizations that you work with, so we can leverage what we're, I think, willingness to do something on the part of the city with other people, and seeing if we can get their resources also to make this move forward quicker. I think that would also be a great tool.
That's what they did with the Greater Warren County Economic Development Council, and so I think they got their membership up, was to say, hey, we have these people on board for these amounts. So, maybe just the commitment and the idea and the budgetary process and the letter produced from that process, maybe something you guys can use for fundraising, and then kinda figure out what you really want to do with it. I, I do have some concerns about earmarking it for the architecture with really no, I think it'd be different if the funding was in place and it's gonna be architecture and the projects would be completed by this date. You know, I do think that there's an issue with whether or not earmarking it that specifically will meet, you know, kinda Alderman Ock's point as far as a tourism allocation. But I think generally with the project, I think, you know, kinda working these things together, I think it can be done, it's just kinda figuring out the logistics of it.
Alderman Clark, you have a comment?
Yeah, I think for the most part, what I can see from the board is that we're all pretty much behind this, and for the $10,000. Should we, like, sort of table it or something, let Chris and work out some of the details on how we can give this money and work with the American Legion to, or VFW?
It's a veterans committee.
Veterans Committee, the Veterans Committee on how, how we can, how we can do it legally, pass that money or that service on.
Now, maybe this is inappropriate, but I wonder if we can turn it over to our economic development person who has contacts with businesses and resources, and maybe they can meet with the committee and talk about, what is the strategy for leveraging the 10 grand?
Well, that'd be another part, but the other part is how, how legally we can pass the tourism.
What's the trigger gonna be that we'll pay? What's the trigger that we cut a check?
I think what we want, the first thing I'd say is, and I think this makes sense for you guys as well, is, you guys are gonna have that meeting coming up to talk about fireworks for next year, is to amend your budget, to include an allocation for it, and then discuss and make a recommendation of when that donation is gonna trigger, you know, if, you know, like, what it's specifically gonna be allocated for. I think the cleaner way to do it is kind of bricks and mortar, I hate to use that term, but something more concrete than the architectural setup phase. Does that make sense?
Do you have a budget that's kind of broken down?
Yeah, we do. We do. We've got, we've got budgeted items from, you know, like, the Christmas.
No, 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 I'm talking about this project.
Oh, for this?
Not for the tourism.
No, we just, we just.
Well, they do, they do. They have a budget, right?
They have a budget.
No, that's what I'm asking. So can we pick something off of that that we feel strongly about, that says our 10,000 goes towards the pond, or the, the sign, or the poles? And poles, or whatever?
Poles are already, flagpoles are already taken care of, so.
Can I just, can I just real quick?
Go ahead.
Um, it's not like we need a check now, we need to put it in the bank. Baseball, I'm sorry.
Get up, Bill.
Um, basically what we're looking at is like you were saying, a letter intent, a pledge from the city, that they're gonna give $10,000 towards this project. We know that, we have wrote it down. When we get to the point where we're gonna need that money, we can always come to you and say, "Okay, this is what we got, this is what we want the money for, this is what we want to spend it for." That's when, then you can say, "Okay, let's spend it on that, let's give them the money for that." And we can do it at that point. Right now, we're just, wanna know if we can write it down, till we can look for it in the future.
Are you looking for a, do we, we can't give a letter of intent, but we can certainly acknowledge in the meeting?
Well, I think, I think the best way to do it would be at their tourism meeting, to amend the tourism budget, to include a $10,000 allocation in the budget from year to year, and then when you, when you guys do your new tourism budgets?
We usually do it in February or March.
So I think they could put it in the budget, then I think the mayor can send a letter saying the tourism has, you know, earmarked this much money. But I want to be clear, 'cause I'm gonna put the specific language in there, it, it is only binding for a year. This board cannot bind a board beyond a year. So, it, it just is subject to renewal. Our contracts are year to year, that's the same way.
So we can't revise our budget now, to take 10,000 out of our contingency earmark it now?
No, that's what I'm saying to do. Earmark it now and set it aside in there, but the way I'm understanding it is, you probably are not gonna be coming to the city by the time you redo your budget, you're just gonna earmark it in the next budget again, and we could do another letter at that time too. It's just, it has to, by mechanism of state law, it has to renew year to year. The, the board, it would be non-binding if you came back three years later and said, "Here's my letter, you give my $10,000." This board would not be obligated to do it. That's just the law in the state of Missouri. So, in a kind of a longer-term relationship, it would just be like any other budgeted item, we would have to, you amend your budget now, renew it as part of the budget, the mayor could issue a letter saying, "This money's been budgeted, the board approves, you know, this allocation to you guys, when you guys get to the point that you need to come and collect." But it would have to be renewable year to year.
What's the difference in what you're suggesting than this request I have in front of me here, from the tourism fund expenditure request, saying they, they authorize giving $10,000? What's the difference in what you just said in this?
I think the difference would be, that would be giving them $10,000 now, but it doesn't sound like they want $10,000 now. It sounds like what you're saying is, you know, we just want a commitment that you're gonna give us $10,000 when we need it, right? So, it's kind of like a future request, at least that's the way I understood it to be, unless I'm wrong.
Well, and that's, that was back to my suggestion, why we wouldn't give them a letter of intent, that it, it is for a future request. But I think what they're asking from the board is, will, will you give us something saying, yes, you're gonna contribute $10,000 toward this project?
Right, and I think.
Am I right on that? Is that what you're asking?
Wendell, Wendell, let Wendell. Go ahead.
Okay.
My name's Wendell Webb, I'm new to Warrington area, I've only lived in the area two years. Okay, but I come from business. Okay, what you want us to do is to make an allocation for the tourism board of $10,000 for the next three or four years, with a trigger, every year to obtain that money. If we do not provide that trigger, that money will go back into the budget as normal. Is that, is that understood?
Yes. And, and what, basically, the letter that the mayor's talking about is, it would have to be renewable, because the mayor can't say, "For the next three years, I can oblige this money." 'Cause you can't do that. A mid-government, government body can't do that in the state of Missouri. You can only go year to year. But, but yes, that's exactly what I'm saying.
It's basically, it's overhead-type money, that's renewable every year.
Exactly.
Based on a trigger that happens.
Yes.
And in our case, there would be no, nothing tied to that trigger, other than what our plan would be. So, we would go ahead and complete our architectural drawings, which is the egg to get this project started. We have to have that trigger. So we would come back, if you had approved the $10,000 as a trigger for this year, our trigger would be the completion of the architectural drawings. Next year, it would be trigger of laying the foundation, or stuff like this. So, that type of plan, planned out for the year with the budget allocated by the board, is, is what you would need, right?
Well, that's what, that's what they said. I think, I think the attorney was committing you to a multi-year allocation. So, as he's saying to Mike, "Put $10,000 in the budget this year, we'll put $10,000 in the next year."
No, 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 no.
And it'll be ready to rely on it, that's what I heard.
No, no, no. It's a one-time allocation. One-time allocation, but it, but because you can only, you have to do, go through the budget process.
I understand.
And put that in the budget, and then the allocation would be, when you guys figure the trigger point to be, would be when it would pay out.
Okay, one part that I, I heard him, heard you say, that I thought, you said we could not do, was pay for like an architectural drawing. That was not something that we could do out of tourism money?
Well, I think the architectural drawing gets, stretches the definition of promoting tourism a little bit, that concerns me, in that it's not really, I mean, it could be five, seven years out, or the project could not be completed, and I don't think that's gonna happen, but I think.
I don't want to leave these folks with an idea that we can pay for the architectural drawing.
I was gonna say, I think you already have $10,000 that could pay for the architectural draw, right, by now? You have $10,000 already set aside?
We can.
Can I make a suggestion, Mayor?
Sure.
Due to the difficulty and length of conversation, I wonder if what we should do is refer this to Terry and her staff and tourist board to meet with, and figure out a recommendation for the, for the council to act upon, because we've gone 20 minutes, and I think we're still going in circles. I think there's a clear intent on the part of the board to support this project, and we just need to get the details and let them work out the details.
It sounds exactly what I said 20 minutes ago.
Well, that's why I knew was the right answer, 'cause you said it.
And could I ask that the city attorney provide us with the guidelines and stuff, so we may study them and have our plan prepared when we go to the tourism board for their request?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is that the general feeling of the board?
Yes.
That we'll put it back on their shoulders? Are you fine with that, Terry?
Yes.
Okay. And Mike, you all.
Well, you've got me so totally confused.
He's doing fireworks, he's an architect, all of them.
What can we, what can we spend tourism dollars on anymore? That's what I'm, you guys give me an answer to that someday, and I'll, I'll be.
Don't feel bad, Mike, I voted the wrong way on the motion, I thought I understood, so.
Mike, we do appreciate what the tourism board does for the city. You, you have a great group of people there, and we appreciate your efforts and enthusiasm. So, we're gonna move on, I, I think that's, that's where we're at.
Did I make a brief statement?
Very brief.
I'll make a brief.
All right.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your support, however it comes. I'd like to thank Mike and the tourism board for giving an audience to us and recommending us for help. However your help comes, whether it's financially or whatever, we really appreciate it, and I'd like to, on behalf of the Tribute to Veterans Memorial Committee, who's a cross-section of lots of people in the community, the VFW, Marine Corps League, Legion, Elks Club, and many, many, National Marine Corps League, and many individuals from our community working together, we are going to get this done. And we'll use whatever assets you can send to us in the best way possible, and I hope and pray it's not gonna take seven years, because some of us are getting a little old. So, one thing Mike did mention over there, was the fact that we want to do this in phases. The $250,000 was estimated on the high side. Hopefully, it will not take that much. One of the reasons that we haven't raised more money from industry and business is because we have not, we did not have our 501(c)(3) paperwork. We had the permission to operate as a 501(c)(3) operation, but we didn't have the paperwork. Tom put in for that over a year ago, and it's taken, how many, how long was it?
It took exactly 55 weeks to get the letter from the IRS.
So now, we are going to be approaching the local industry and business community. This is what we've been waiting on. It'll be in phases. The first phase hopefully will be the plaza with the flagpoles, which the carpenters donated $10,000 to the VFW, three, 2011, to be used for this community project, for this memorial for the flagpoles. And we have them, they're in storage in Tom's barn, and they're all first-class. But we would like to put the plaza down with the flagpoles and the lighting and all the footings, and that would be phase one. And then phase two would probably be the wall, phase three, and, and the reflecting font. Phase three will probably be the bronze statuary. So, the first phase could possibly be between 50 and $75,000. I would also like to mention that if we were to be inclusive of, let's say, $10,000 from you all, however it comes, that we have raised about $27,000 plus, $27,000 plus in the last three and a half years, if you include the $10,000 from the carpenters' union that came through the VFW. So, we're not gonna let you down, and we just want to, on behalf of our committee, just thank you very much for your hospitality and letting us have our say. Just one other thing, Wendell Webb has done quite a bit of research on this, and we find that not only do we have 64 KI-8s that were killed in action in this community, evidently, we have several people who are missing in action who are on that list. And also that several people were buried in France, in the Philippines, and have no headstone in this county. This is the only place that their family can go to see a memorial to their fallen relative. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on, we still got a lot of business to do yet tonight. Appreciate y'all being here. Some of these people wanna get home kinda halfway before 11 o'clock, so.
Do you need us anymore?
Nope, you're free to go.
Thank you very much.
Oh, no, you have to stay. Uh-uh, no way.
I, I'm on the agenda, item 10B, approval of controlled substance and alcohol testing policy.
Mayor, you need to vote, the board needs to vote on approving the recommend, the tourism recommendations.
Oh, yeah, the other items.
Yeah.
Yes. I'll make a motion.
Did we skip that?
Yeah, we did. I make a motion that we approve to pay $633 per requested from the tourism board.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kessley, seconded by Alderman Ock, then what was the amount? 633? 633 for the two items from the tourism board? Roll call, please. Any discussion on that? Everybody knows what it's for. Roll call, please.
Alderman Drayer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderperson Kessley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Drayer?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. I was moving right along.
I know you were. You're doing good.
All right. 10B, approval of controlled substance and alcohol testing policy.
At the last meeting, you all approved the draft of this policy with the request that we bring it back to include all employees in the random testing. That is the only difference in this policy from the one you previously approved, is now random testing will apply to all employees of the city.
I'll make the motion that we approve the controlled substance and alcohol testing policy with the inclusion of all employees for the policy revision.
Is that, is that an ordinance we need, or is that just a motion?
No, just, it's just.
Policy change. Was that a second I heard over here?
Yes.
Motion made by Alderman Kessley, seconded by Alderman Hawley, to, for the approval of controlled substances and alcohol testing policy to include random, is that what you said? Random testing as described in section 9.4?
For all employees.
For all employees. Scratch that random testing thing. For all employees.
It's random of all employees.
Yeah.
It's not testing all employees.
I got you. Any discussion, concern? Roll call, please.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Kessley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero.
My next item for you this evening is request for approval of updates to our discipline policy. In looking at our alcohol and drug testing policy, we felt like it was really important, especially since randoms are going to apply to all employees, that it be clear in our discipline policy. So the city attorney recommended adding that language specifically to this policy. That is the only change to this policy from what it currently is, is to clearly define that.
I'll make a motion to include the city's controlled substance and alcohol testing policy to the discipline policy.
I'll second that. Motion by Alderman Kessley, seconded by Alderman Schluter to include what now?
The city's controlled substance and alcohol testing policy.
And alcohol testing policy to all employees?
To include it in the discipline policy.
In the discipline policy.
And discipline policy. Read that back. She's making it tougher on us.
Not really.
It's approval to, for the discipline policy with the changes made to the discipline policy. As submitted.
You happy?
Yeah.
Okay. Did we have a second on that?
Yes.
Schluter.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Kessley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Real estate bids.
We had the contract that we previously had for, this is for the industrial, industrial development authority property that now is the property of the city over in Trusdale. There was previously a contract with Thomas Realty Group. It expired July 31st. We've put this out for bid twice now to 21 different firms and received zero proposals. So I just need to know how you want us to handle that.
Or sale by owner.
Nobody wants to sell that property?
Nobody. So we could have some signs made. We could put it up. We could advertise it on all the locations that Michelle advertises and see what we get.
We have a city bonus policy.
Which is right now on all of that anyway. So that's not really a change in anything. It's just a change to the sign.
It would be the contact.
And you're saying, for sale by owner?
Yeah. Okay. What else do you have?
Anybody got any issues with that?
No, not at all.
Michelle, do you have any issues with that?
No.
It's your phone number going on the sign.
That's right, your home phone number.
Your home phone number.
And yourself.
Okay, we're good with that.
All right.
We'll try to solve ourselves.
Moving on.
How about 10C? Or E?
Last meeting, we talked about doing a survey to see what the thought process would be for the public in regard to recycling at no additional cost. We looked at this to determine what the best possible way would be to put a survey out there. We think that the best answer is to put it onto the utility bill, and I was wrong. That the return portion is the portion where the message is. So we actually can fit a message there that would ask the question, allow them to either return that section of their bill marked, or give them a website where they could take a Survey Monkey survey to respond. The newspaper actually put it in as their question of the week last week. And Tim told me today that there were 22 yeses and eight, is that right, Tim? 22 and five? 22 yeses and five noes. If recycling were offered at no cost, would you participate? Tim's gonna give us the results when it's completed, so.
Let me make comment. I think the idea was the survey, of the survey was kind of a response to John saying that he didn't wanna spend the money to pay the trash remover costs for recycling for people who aren't gonna recycle. So in other words, if you're gonna pay for, we're gonna pay 2,500 homes to recycle, and only 1,000 are gonna recycle, he don't wanna pay for the additional homes. I think that was the thrust of his argument. So Terry and I have been talking about this, and we have a different suggestion. And that would be that the city would simply offer free recycling to anybody who chooses to recycle. So if the word got out that if you wanna recycle, you get free recycling, the city will pick up the tab, then we're not paying for the ones that we would've who aren't gonna recycle in any case. And as I understand, Wilson, the trash company, is willing to allow, just bill for, well, which they do now, just bill for the people who are interested. So the difference is, from what was before, was, well, we're gonna do a survey to see if we're gonna pay for everybody. But the proposal, or the change now, is that we're only gonna pay for the people who are interested.
Yeah. Wilson, because you all chose last meeting to renew the contract, it's gonna be $1.25 per household that recycles. Wilson doesn't care if it's the city subsidizing that or the individual paying it on their bill. Our contract with Wilson is $1.25 per household, for however many participate. So there is not a requirement that it be all or nothing. It does not have to be all households.
So my thinking would be that I think it's in the city's interest to encourage recycling. So we would simply, to encourage recycling, saying, anybody in the city who wants to recycle, the city will pay the $1.25. And that's kind of a change of direction to what we're talking about.
And you're confusing me on what Mr. Wilson is saying? He's saying we can't pick and choose those?
Mr. Wilson doesn't care-
Oh, he doesn't care.
-whether it's just as it is now. If you want recycling at your home, you call in and it gets added to your bill. Or if the city is paying that $1.25 and not billing you for it. The billing is really our side of the house, so to speak. Our contract with Wilson is, he's going to charge $1.25 per household that participates, whether it's all or ten. It makes no difference to him.
I spent quite a bit of time after the last meeting, this discussion, to try to get an idea from the constituents in the ward, what they thought. And exactly, you know, as I thought, a lot of them said that, yeah, they would recycle if we paid for it.
It was free.
If it was free. And so I kinda go along with Gary. I don't know, do we really need to do the survey if we're willing to pay for the ones who want it anyway? I don't know, do we need to go through that process?
I don't, I don't see why we would need to. We just need to know who wants to do it. And communicate that then to the public that that's an option.
What do we think, around 22% of the people recycle now?
I don't remember. It was 780-something, I think, in total. So that'd be roughly a third, a little more than a third.
Mayor, the people that I talked to, whether we paid for it or not, they weren't too interested. Part, what I was at was a, I was told it was like $38,000 if everybody was in it.
Yes.
And I didn't think the difference, if the pickup difference would be that much. And I didn't think it was worth $38,000 to the city.
The cost is-
The people I talked to are, that are wanting to do the recycling, they don't really seem to care whether the city pays for it or they pay the dollar and a quarter a month. I have not got the response, as some of the aldermen have gotten, that it was an issue of the dollar and a quarter a month.
I talked to a lot of people who are on fixed budgets. You know, a lot of older retired senior citizens, people who would like to do it. But the cost, I mean, it sounds, you know, a dollar doesn't sound like much, but it makes a difference to their bill. And I think if we supported that, that they would go along with the recycling.
Is the support we're gonna give as a board of aldermen gonna be capped at a one-year period for any type of budget? Are we gonna start budget monetarily every year for this?
We can't tie another board.
Terry, isn't the upfront cost the containers? That's what we, as a board, have to cover.
Well, I think what you all talked about last meeting is, they really can use any kind of container.
Yeah.
So there isn't necessarily a need that everybody has to be provided a container. They would still have the option, as they currently do, because there are a few people who want the bigger rolling cart kind of container. They still would have the ability, if they choose to do that, to have that bill directly to them. But as far as containers, you know, you can use a plastic tote that you buy at Walmart.
And I think we just educate the public on that. We need to educate the public on that piece of it. Because I thought you had to have a recycle thing, too. I would've carried my trash casket tons.
Just kidding. We just, we need to let the public know that any container is acceptable and let Wilson know we're not putting, we're not paying for those containers. So we don't want him delivering those.
What would be an effective date? We don't have to tie it to the contract cycle, do we?
Not at all. That's really up to, to all of you. I think the thing that's required is making the decision, determining that you want to amend the budget to include those costs, and then putting the word out to the public.
Is that the direction we're heading, headed, free recycling?
Well, I'll make a motion that we offer to the citizens of Warrenton the opportunity to recycle at no cost with the city picking up the current dollar amount. And that we, that would be it.
And we what?
That would be it, the end.
I was gonna add a bunch of other stuff in, but it's not necessary.
When do we start that?
Effective November 1st.
Through?
Through, no, just November 1st. You can always stop at any time you want to. But open-ended.
Open-ended.
It'll be subject to budget appropriations.
It always is, everything.
Everything you're to hear.
It's always subject to future boards.
I said it. Terry pointed out that I said that at least 10 times.
Well, no, you did it 11.
11, yes.
And I've done it once, and so has Gary. 13 times on record.
A motion on the floor, but I didn't hear a second.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Holly, that the city offer the residents of City Warrenton free recycling beginning November 1. Is that the intent of your motion? Any other discussion on it? Roll call.
Alder Person Kessley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
No.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one.
And the only other thing I have for you is just a reminder, on September 29th, that 6:30, that we have the interviews with the companies for the master plan scheduled. One at 6:30 and one at 7:30.
When was the date again?
September the 29th.
6:30, and what was the other one?
7:30.
7:30. Okay. Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Finance manager, Gabrielle Curry.
Good evening. My first item is the accounts payable for the month of August. The total amount that I'm requesting is $386,663.06.
Make a motion for the approval of the payment of bills in the amount of $386,603.06.
Second that.
It's $386,663.
63.
And 6 cents.
That's what I thought. That's what I was looking at.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schluter to pay the accounts payable in the amount of $386,663.06. That sound right?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Kessley?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero.
Can I ask a little quick question?
Sure.
We, $5,302 for mulch, rubber mulch, where did that go? Is that like the playground at the park?
It goes around the rubber trees.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
It's a playground.
I didn't know if that was just for the pool park or that was other places. But that's basically, was that the pool park?
It goes on the playgrounds. It's the rubber that goes underneath.
Under the swings and-
To create the cushion.
The shredded stuff. Okay. One other question, then, I realized. I just drove by Morgan Park today, and that retaining wall is, I mean, there's huge pieces of it that are hanging out there to fall. And do we have an idea when that contractor's supposed to come in and do it?
I would have to check with Brad.
Okay. Because I mean, it looks, it almost looks like we need to fence it off. Is it's that dangerous?
I'll have them take a look at that and let you all know.
Yeah, if it's shifted overnight because of all the storms or whatever. But it looks like it would be an opportunity for some little kid to walk on it, because it's a plank. I think we need to secure it.
I'll have Brad look at it, too. Thank you.
Like me, particularly, that's why I said it, John.
Gabrielle?
My next item is just the financial report for the month of July.
I like revenues being higher than projected.
Let's hope sales tax trend continues, right? That was a heck of a July.
It will not.
I know, I know.
Why was that? What happened there? Do we have any, like, is there some, something that happened that caused that to be higher than expected?
A lot of times, it's the timing of when the state requires the payments to come in. It may be different, the cycle of payment different than what it was the same time last year.
Okay.
So what you're gonna find is, next month, if you look at the month alone, it's gonna be way down.
Down, okay. Okay.
Any other questions on Gabrielle's monthly report? Anything else for us, Gabrielle?
You want a Bobcat or something?
That's the next person.
That is coming.
That's coming.
Thank you, Gabrielle.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to Michelle Schluth, her economic development director.
Good evening. The first thing I have for you is my monthly report. And with that, I'd like to inform you all that we just found out today that we received our tree resource improvement and maintenance grant, our TRIM grant, for $10,000. So we will be getting that grant.
You mind giving a quick update on where we're at on our sidewalk project on South 47?
We have received the, all the easements that we're going to get, and the construction plans have been sent to us for review and to MoDOT. And we are working with them on getting that approved so we can move forward and get into construction.
You have a timeframe on when we might be ready for bids?
I do not at this time. I have to get over to MoDOT tomorrow. One of the things I'll work on tomorrow is that they now require copies of all of the donation letters that we sent out and all of the paperwork from our calls and negotiator reports and all of that. So I'll be sending that over as well to them tomorrow.
Okay.
What side of the highway is this on?
The west side.
So we're gonna do sidewalk on the west, too?
That is the west up to Warrior Ridge, where the lights are, to go down all your homes or?
Because I walked the whole area. So on the east side, sidewalk goes from where the light is all the way down. This one's gonna be on the opposite side, going all the way down?
To the right-hand crossing.
Oh, going the other direction. So you'd have to cross at the light.
But there are pedestrian crossings.
But there's not a thing that you can push right now to go across there? No, there's not.
No, I thought there was. You sure?
Is that included in the?
That is supposed to be included in.
That would be included in the construction of the sidewalk.
Okay.
There'd be a button.
I guess I just hit the pole for the heck of it.
Is there a way? There are still some gaps on the east side. I think there's a block just north of the-
We have tried to get them, Alderman Ock. Tried to get them, Alderman Ock, uh, we've gone to some residents and tried to get them so that the city could do them ourselves. We did that, uh, several years ago when we did the sidewalks in front of the church and Pittman Funeral Home.
Right.
And the homeowners refused to give them to us.
What about the one that's just south of the library? There's a.
That's what she's talking about.
No, there's one, there's, there's a stretch of two or three homes.
Yes, they have refused to give them to us and so has that one house between the library and the church at the end. He has refused to give it to us as well.
But you can walk around those other three houses.
I walked on the grass.
Well, you can walk a really quick road.
Figured somebody'd come out of the yard and yell at me, but.
Although you can walk around on a road. The one that's, the problem is the one between the library and the little church.
Yes, and we've tried to get that.
Yeah, we can't seem to get anything done.
To no avail.
And we're, we're pretty well convinced we're not gonna get it from that individual as long as he owns that property.
I thought the, well, person who owned that property is recently deceased.
No.
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 So, no. Nope. Then we definitely wouldn't get it.
Maybe after that.
Maybe then.
What about Arbor Day?
We are looking to, uh, put Arbor Day with the citywide cleanup day. So, hopefully we can get additional participation from city residents since we haven't, seem to have a lot of that in the past. At this time, still planning it. We have some flyers we're gonna hand out and looking for some other things that we are gonna do with that. But I just wanna make you aware that we are looking to do that with the citywide cleanup day in October.
Any other questions for Michelle? We're good. You can go home as you want.
Thank you.
Or if you wanna stay, you can stay. Mr. Gevers?
Good evening. First item I have is a skid steer. And this is under state contract.
Is that the same as a Bobcat?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we get to play with it too?
Sir?
Do we get to play with it also?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We got one shaking her head no and one saying yes.
You want to know if you play with it too?
Is this a tree in?
Yeah, we're the trader old unit and it's seven years old.
Seven years old. So, that's what, you're getting the twenty thousand on a tree in?
Yes, sir.
I'm impressed that you're under budget.
I'm not done.
Just like.
For that item.
There's like three or four items. He's way under budget on it. I'm wondering if, what's going on?
So, you're wanting thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents?
That's correct.
Any questions from the board?
I'll make a motion that we purchase the, um, T seven seven zero Bobcat compact track loader for thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Kastlerly, seconded by Alderman Schluter to authorize the purchase of a seventeen seventy Bobcat compact track loader in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Any other questions, concerns?
If I can't play with it.
You're gonna vote no then. Roll call.
Alderman Clark?
Oh, it's me? Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
I'm sorry.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
John wanted to pick the color.
Motion carried six zero.
Next item I have is the twenty-four inch planer, high flow. This is a grinder to remove the asphalt. So, instead of doing patches and laying them on top, we can grind the edges and then give them the offset.
They only grinds twenty-four inches?
Uh, that's correct.
And, and we don't have a tree in for that. This is a new item.
This is a new item.
But under budget.
Under budget.
But it'll attach to the new Bobcat.
That's correct.
Oh, I never thought of that. I bet it does. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the purchase of a twenty-four inch planer, high flow, in the amount of thirteen thousand, two hundred eighty dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderman Holly, for the purchase of a twenty-four inch planer dash high flow in the amount of thirteen thousand, two hundred eighty dollars and forty cents from Bobcat of St. Louis. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Next item I have is an eighty-four inch sweeper that attaches to the Bobcat. It'll, it picks up the debris and puts it in a container. We raise a Bobcat up and dump it in a pickup truck. So, when we go in with the grinder, we'll grind the asphalt and come back and pick it up with the sweeper.
Can we use that to clean streets?
Yes, we can.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Add a side broom on it so we can run along the gutters and pick the gutters up like on Main Street.
Picking up sanders and stuff.
We can run it in there and it kicks it into the.
Perfect. I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the eighty-four inch sweeper for four thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kastlerly, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to approve the eighty-four inch sweeper bid from Bobcat of St. Louis in the amount of four thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Next item I have is some jobs that I want approved. The first one is a sidewalk repair on West Oak and northeast to the alley.
Where is that? I tried to figure that out.
There's a little jog. If you're going right past the alley, it goes down towards, oh. What's the name of that street? I just drew a blank. It's about, it's, um.
Off of Morgan?
It's a hundred and eighty feet long. You probably can't see it cause it's all busted up.
Yeah, I, I drove. I didn't see it, but.
It's an alley, huh?
It's an alley.
Fifteen hundred dollar project?
That's correct.
Make a motion that we approve the project for sidewalk on West Oak, northeast of the alley for fifteen hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Kastlerly for the approval of the West Oak, northeast alley sidewalk project in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Next item I have is the sidewalk along Flora to Veterans Memorial Parkway. It's on Steinhegen. When we get this completed, from the walking bridge all the way to Veterans Memorial Parkway, we'll have good sidewalk.
And so far, the project looks great. The work the crew did, it looks really, really good.
Thank you. I'll let them know.
Let me point out to John that this is not in my ward, but I'll make a motion that we approve the Steinhegen sidewalk from Flora to Veterans Memorial's Parkway in the amount of two thousand four hundred dollars. It's actually in your ward.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Kastlerly for the approval of the sidewalk project from Flora to Veterans Memorial Parkway in the amount of two thousand four hundred. Is that right?
Yep.
Scott?
Two thousand four hundred, that's correct.
Roll call, please.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Next item I have is the sidewalk on Ashland, Steinhegen, Highway Forty-seventh. It's for repairs for four thousand seven hundred.
And that's the sidewalk on the south side or the north side, right?
That's correct. Right where them bushes are.
Yeah, it's in pretty bad shape. I'll make a motion that we approve the sidewalk project on Ashland, Ashland from Steinhegen to Forty-seventh in the amount of four thousand seven hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schluter for the approval of the sidewalk from Ashland, Steinhegen to Highway Forty-seventh in the amount of forty-seven hundred dollars. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yep.
Motion carried six zero.
Next item I have is overlaying and patching. And I have Briarwood to Briarwood Court, but it's really, um, Middletown Road in Briarwood Court and it's patching some spots that the asphalt's bad.
I'll make a motion that we approve the overlay and patching from Middletown Road to Briarwood's Court in the amount of one thousand one hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schluter to approve the overlay and patching of Briarwood to Briarwood Court in the amount of one thousand four hundred dollars.
Middletown. Middletown to Briarwood.
Does it?
Yeah, it's Middletown.
He changed it.
Oh, you changed it. Okay, Middletown to Briarwood Court. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
And then the next item I got is overlay patching on Thurman to Troy Road in the alley. For five thousand three hundred dollars.
Make a motion to approve the overlaying, patching of Thurman to Troy Road in the alley in the amount of five thousand three hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to approve the overlay and patching from Thurman to Troy Road Alley in the amount of five thousand three hundred dollars. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Next item I have is overlaying and patching on Powell Street from Veterans Memorial.
That's north of Veterans Memorial, right? Powell Street?
Powell Street, yeah, it's right by the water tower, right next to Warrenton Tire.
Make a motion that we approve the patching of Powell Street from Veterans Memorial in the amount of eighty-four hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Holly, seconded by Alderman Ock to approve the overlay and patching Powell Street from Veterans Memorial Parkway in the amount of eighty-four hundred dollars. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Next item I have is the overlay patching on Claire East of Fourth Street. That's the repairs on the road in there.
You're saving the most expensive ones to last. How did you strategically place those? Never mind. I'll make a motion that we approve the overlay patching from Claire East of Fourth Street for a total of ninety-five hundred.
Second. Motion by Alderman Kastlerly, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the overlay and patching of Claire East of Fourth Street in the amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars. Roll call, please.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Guy, I just thought about it, but did you guys pave the road, um, that little alley by the Lutheran church that we accepted into the city formally last spring? Um, do you know the road I'm talking?
Moccasin.
Moccasin.
Moccasin. Uh, right now I got requests for qualifications for engineering for streets, uh, sidewalk and stormwater. And those should be in sometime this month because for us just to go pave a street will run into stormwater issues. So, when those qualifications come in and we choose an engineer, then we'll follow up and that'll be one of the things on the list for us to address.
Can, can I give you a, something to put on the project list for next budget year? I think it's Canterbury, you know, where the, where the bridge is over off Warren in your area, where Warren and you go to the bridge and it heads right up the hill. The, everything from, from the, uh, where they concreted the roads, it's asphalt down all the way to the low onto the bridge. That's really.
We're, we're addressing that this year.
Okay, that's in this year. Are they gonna do anything with the curbing? Cause it looked like either the city or somebody else, when they did the curbs, the cars must be hitting. So, somebody went out and put asphalt in the curbs.
Well, they, they bottom out when they pull them, so they put the asphalt there so they don't bottom out.
Did the city do that or the rest?
I have no idea.
Okay, cause it really looks bad.
Cause some of it's deteriorating.
Okay, good.
What are you talking about? On Warren Avenue?
No.
No, no, no. If it's Canterbury.
You know where Lagoon is?
Yeah.
And you know how the, the road above Lagoon then curves down?
Okay, all right. Yeah, it's where, it's really bad.
You got the lower bridge when you're coming from Warren, the lower section of Warren, when you come up that hill, that whole, that whole stretch.
Right. Yeah, that, I mean, that.
I'm almost sure that's on the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, if it's not, we need to get it this next year.
I want you to know that Gary has started a wellness program and he has walked every one of these streets.
I have.
You seen?
No, that's what he keeps saying he's walked.
I have, what?
We need witnesses.
I'm getting him a runkeeper here so he can.
Yeah, you do that.
I was out of Warrior Avenue and Forty-seventh and I was gonna walk through the ward over there and I thought they probably threw, threw me out cause there'd be three aldermen in the ward at one time.
Yeah. You'd have to write it up. Record your breathing.
How about an update on the manhole curve?
Manhole lining has been completed. The amount came in at ninety-seven thousand, six hundred twenty-eight seventy-five. We budgeted a hundred thousand dollars.
Man, you're doing good today. He's gonna ask for something.
Forty-six manholes were lined and, uh, thirty of them were connected to Water Street Lift Station. Twelve of them were in the Warren and Roy area. So, and they had an add to paper, little article about the lining of the manholes.
They were very courteous while they were out.
And how, how many calls did you receive today from flooding in that area and back up, uh, short water?
None.
That was my question. Knock on wood.
They did a really good job.
None.
Maybe that's, maybe that's the answer.
And going off of that, our next, our next step is to, um, start smoke testing. So, we're gonna make some signs up in the beginning of the subdivision that we're gonna have, start doing smoke testing. And we'll send out flyers on the areas that we're doing this with contact names and numbers. And we're gonna start smoking the sewer mains to see whose gutter drains, any stormwater's coming off into the sewer systems.
Good.
And we'll address that. We haven't come up with this, uh, an idea on how to address it and how clear.
What have we historically done for property owners who own homes that stormwater drains into the system? Have we worked out some kind of arrangements where they fix it, we pay part of it, or is it just all on the property owner?
I don't believe we have anything. There's an ordinance on it saying you can't do it.
Right, I know that.
But I don't think we had of anything. Me and Terry talked about, about it, maybe coming up with some idea, but haven't got to that bridge yet. Our first goal is to determine who got it and then sometimes they're an easy fix. You know, it's just a matter of taking it and downspout away and capping off the drain. But that's our next step.
Okay.
As far as I know, Alderman Ock, at least since I've been here, they have never done the smoke testing on the drains. We've talked about it, but we've never actually gotten it accomplished.
I know a number of years ago, we actually did it in one of the subdivisions and I can't, and I thought we had some kind of arrangement where if it was to be fixed, the city kind of participated in some way. I don't know if it was a cash or recruited something, but we did do some smoking testing a number of years ago. I don't know if you remember that, John. Because we found stuff and it might've been, what's the court behind the Wesleyan Church? Was that Tomahawk?
The Tomahawk is a subdivision we did. I think we did.
Any money that was. Yeah, I don't know. We do, we did smoke test there one year.
Anything else for Guy? Is that it, Guy?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, we thank you.
Thank you.
Melody, five-year strategic planning. Are we supposed to have something on our machine that addresses that?